All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the October 21st, 2024 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Sullivan.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methvin. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, did receive a phone call from Alderwoman Methvin. She is unable to be here this evening, so she is excused. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on October 7th, 2024. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item this evening. It's a resolution repealing, City of Crest Hill Resolution Number 360 dated March 18th, 1991. As discussed at the work session last week, this resolution back from 1991 required developers or applicants to annex to the city to attempt to de-annex or disconnect from their existing fire district and apply to the Lockport Township Fire District. Lockport and Plainfield have reached an IGA that's a boundary agreement good for 20 years. And as discussed last week, there really is no longer in need for Resolution 360, which could hamper annexation to the city. So the resolution is before you. Recommendation would be for a motion to approve.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution repealing the City of Crest Hill Resolution Number 360 dated March 18th, 1991. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1261.
That's all I have, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the council might have.
Any questions of our city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graff. Good evening, Tony.
There we go. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My report, start off with the city center facility. We did have our elevator inspection. Company finally come out. We do need one more item to be finished, which is the testing of the telephones. They weren't activated when they were out here. So the company that needs to activate those phones have been contacted and will have another test done. Front damage to the inside clerk windows. We're still having a struggle with our vendors to give us new updates and cost for replacement of the windows. We got two companies that have stated they would do the work. One's the original and one's another company. So hopefully the next, we're going to be pushing on for the next week to get those quotes in here so we can have something for the work session. Grand Prairie Water Commission, draft budget has been completed. Staff is reviewing it. The commission itself will review the budget on November 7th. And as soon as the review's been completed, the draft will get on display. We'll get copies to all the councilmen. Stateville, nothing new to report. I think everybody's on standby because of the election, if anything new happening. Lockport, the Lockport Township Fire District, we're pending the traffic study report before we can move any further with their plans. They're hoping to be able to have that report done in the next four weeks. Job announcements, we have interviewed some Public Works Director candidates. We got three candidates we'd like to present to the committee or council. If everybody's open from next Tuesday, we'd like to schedule a meeting, a work session, starting at 7:00 for those three candidates. So I'll send you out an email. Anybody have an issue with next Tuesday for our work session?
When you say next Tuesday, could you give us a date?
Yes, 29th October.
Well, those are important, so we need to find a way to do them.
Okay.
I'm available.
No, I just wanted to know, next Tuesday, tomorrow's Tuesday, that's why I made it.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
What time we gonna start that?
7:00.
That's fine.
Community Development Director, we have received two applications. They've been reviewed. They do not meet the qualifications. We do have a reconsideration from a candidate. As soon as we could talk to him and get a little bit more information. It was a candidate that was out of state that you guys already interviewed, but we're going to find out a little more details of why he's reconsidering applying for the job. And we'll provide a report for you hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday. He's got some, I think he's got some attributes that really fit into some of the ideas you guys have been talking about for the next community development director with a focus on planning and economic development, too. This candidate really truly has those experience and has those licenses, too, certifications. But I'll send you some more information, see if there's a consideration.
Excuse me, Tony?
Yes.
Did we interview that candidate previously?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll send you an email with the name and all that and his resume again. The one question I would have for you to think about, could talk about in executive session for tomorrow with appointments. Do we want to institute maybe one or two councilmen to do a Teams meeting or Zoom meeting with this candidate to sort of have an update by a couple council members since we were talking about maybe putting the committee together, hiring committee together? This might be an opportunity to try to maybe have a couple of council people that would like to maybe do an interview with him over Zoom at least, so.
Is that what Darrell was talking about for a long time?
Yeah, I, you know, I, we'll talk more in executive session tomorrow night, maybe we come up with a plan. The Finance Director, we got the recruitment tomorrow, two interviews. Both candidates have agreed to be, one's agreed to be here, one's in by Zoom. Building Inspector announcement, we do have three applicants. We're, have been in contact with them. They're going to set up some, well, two of them are in the area, so I think they'll be able to come in and actually have a pre-screening interview with Dave Strahl and with Don Seaman. So hopefully we got a couple of building inspector candidates. Hope they'll give you. The mosquito spray, it's done for the year. We will be getting a report, provide that once you receive from them of what the cost was, our final cost, and any recommendations for possibly next year, what we should do. Water replacement, still ongoing. Making a little bit, little progress with a few change outs with the different times, but we still got a little ways to go yet. Places for eating, the hearing date, I had the wrong hearing date down. I had the one latter part of October. That hearing date was too close to their notices, so the hearing date is November 20th for the five businesses that all received notifications of failure to pay their taxes. And we'll be having adjudication hearing on 11/20 for those four, for those five businesses. I'll get an update on delinquent, all businesses that are delinquent, I'll send an update email tomorrow, and we usually have that after our staff meeting. West Sanitaris, sir, Mike, I didn't have a chance to talk today. Are we still about 60% done, or?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Still ongoing, all is good.
Planning Commission, we did order the iPads that you all recommended, and hopefully they'll be here in about 10 days. And there was a discussion this morning with Clerk Versay about providing the training for the Planning Commission members when they come in. She's offered up to do that. I'm going to put you on the spot, but they should be able to use them for the December meeting. There's not a November meeting right now, anything on the agenda. So we'll have to give them the training in December for the new iPads. State crime lab, same thing going on downstate, no new updates. We have received plans, though, that we found out they are getting ready to go out to bid for the infrastructure work, so if that's the case, they got to have some type of plans in place. So we asked for those plans, and I think Ron might have received them.
Yeah, we have.
The utility plans? So put that in next work session, an update?
Ron M. was going to do a presentation on that.
Okay.
So we'll have to verify with him if it'll be next work session or not.
Hot off the presses. That's all. Any other questions?
Yes, I had sent you an email requesting the documents for tomorrow to be printed and available to us tonight, but I don't see them here.
Oh, I thought you just wanted them for the meeting.
I specifically put in there to have them tonight, so we can review them.
If you give me about a minute afterwards, I do have one packet. I could just, I'll print them all up and be able to give it to you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Tony, I know I contacted you before and asked you to check with the county about the three homes over there on Weber Road, them three properties are abandoned. Where are we at with the county on that? What are they doing?
Are you talking on Weber Road?
Yeah, right across.
Right across from Speedway.
Right, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. I know Don Seaman was supposed to be making contact with their building department to see if they are doing any type of nuisance complaints about them. That's the old schoolhouse and.
Right, because I had talked to him first and then I contacted you after, because he had told me that when he contacted the county, the county response was, well, no one's ever complained to them about it, so they haven't done anything. So we need to start complaining a lot about it, let's get it cleaned up over.
Yeah, maybe I'll put something in writing to the County Board chairman even.
Thank you.
I have a couple things for you, Tony. Can you add on your list, because I see it's getting smaller, so let's add more stuff to it? We still need the update on ceiling that we spoke about. Can you add that to your agenda, the ceiling in the hallway? Remember you sent an email about that? Do you mind putting that on your list so we can track that, just like the windows? Also, I'm assuming it's kind of late, but the handicap access here in front of City Hall that I've requested that we failed to do, any updates on that? Is it in the process to fix that?
It's, it is, it is the standards. I did talk to Ron. It is to ADA standards, the way it's designed, so we'd have to.
The sidewalk?
It meets ADA, meets ADA compliance.
Do we know what we're talking about?
Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about. The complaint was is that you wanted a depressed curb in the front of the parking, because people have to walk around on the island, and that's acceptable. There's, there's no dictation that, or regulations that would have to require that you have depressed curb in the front. As long as you have a place for them to get out, unload, and to safely get to a ramp that's ADA compliant, which is what we have. So it currently meets ADA standards as it's currently constructed.
It's something that we really need to look into if somebody fall while they're making that, going around, I just want to make sure we're not going to get into a lawsuit. That's the only thing, if Mr. Attorney can look into that.
Well, I think if the standards are met through engineers and the architects, if we're going to modify them, we probably have to have a reason to modify, because that's the standard that's been approved. We can look into it, you know, and see if there's a modification we could do. I know what you're saying. It seems to be not logical. That you have to walk behind your vehicle.
Correct.
To walk over to come on up to the area, so maybe there might, we might suggest strongly to the engineers, can you modify and be within the specifications of ADA for risk and liability? Anytime you modify something, then we got to make sure that they're going to support it.
Well, I mean, I'm not just saying this to say I got to complain about it.
Right.
It was the day of the memorial. I mean, I was taken there, and they showed me that it's really hard for them to even walk over there. So I just want to make sure that we meet all the safety requirements. And also any update on the cameras in Public Works that we have requested two years ago, the cameras? What is the status on that?
Yes, we, we did get the camera company out. We're looking at, well, actually, we did a grant to get more, to get more money for the cameras and access control for all our facilities, all our public works facilities, our wellhouses, our pump stations. That grant is $200,000. The grant was actually obtained when Blaine was here, it was a DCO grant, and we finished up all the documentation. So I believe with using some of our existing cameras and some of the new ones that we would be able to purchase with the $200,000, once we get that certified by the award letter, that that's been accepted, we'll go to bid. And our goal is to try to get all the facilities under cameras and access control, hopefully within the next six to nine months.
So that will put us at three years later.
Yes, it's been going on for a while, from what I understand.
Okay, and in last thing, any update on tickets?
No, no, not at all. I, I sent them that update after our last meeting, and I didn't get a date when they could have the draft done. I'll email them again tomorrow.
Do we know what the delay?
No, I do not know what the delay is, but I'll ask. They could give an explanation.
Is it on our end or their end?
It's their end. They've had all the information now for, I want to say almost four weeks, maybe five weeks, so.
Is your communication via email or phone?
I'll probably end up doing both.
Okay, thank you.
Was part of the services that we paid them for to include a presentation at the end?
Correct.
And we're still not getting it, but we paid them for it.
My understanding was, what you approved was for them to do their analysis and that they were going to come back to the council with a budget for implementing recommendations, and that hasn't been done yet. So I don't know, I don't know whether they've submitted any invoices yet for the, I think the initial approval was for $7,500. I don't know whether they've submitted any invoices yet, but I know that Mary said she could do it within that budget, but that there would be a second budget coming for what they were going to do once they had, you know, learned what our system did, what our controls were. And that was just to do their initial evaluation, but to do their recommendations would be another budget, and I haven't heard or seen that they've come back with that, so.
Well, we need to shake that tree and see what's going on, because it's been a long time.
Yeah, it'd be nice to just get the initial analysis that they did.
Yeah, maybe the council can be CC, well, if I can be CC on those emails, blind CC, you don't have to CC me, like, blind CC me. Because it seems like we were wasting like time. They came here, we did the presentation. After almost a year, we've been requesting this, this is October, it's been almost a year. And they finally came here, they were supposed to work on something, within a month, come back, and it's been another four months right now, pretty much.
Yes. I'll provide you update.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mike Ulyts. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First item I have is approval of pay request number 21 for the Vistery Construction Company with direction to send it to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $2,162,132.01. This is for work performed from in the month of September.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of pay request number 21 from Vistery Construction with direction to send it to EPA for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $2,162,132.01. This was discussed at last Monday night's work session also. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Our next item is the approved agreement with USG Water for emergency repair work on wells 4, 8, and 10, iron filters, as we discussed in Monday's meeting. This is a cost not to exceed, $716,978 is to do the work on, again, the iron filters in wells number 4, 8, and 10. 4 is at 2333 Park Rose. Well number 8 is at 2401 Waterford. Well number 10 is at 861 Caton Farm Road. They're exhibiting the same issues that we, that we're exhibiting in well number 11 and well number 12, iron filters. Some not as bad, some worse. When the EPA was in town, they were talking about a possible fine violation if we don't do something with well number 4. So well number 4 may be the worst one of those three. We're hoping that the other two are not as bad as well 4 and 11 that we've experienced. The price we got, well number 11, I think was well over $300,000, so we got a decent price to do these three iron filters all at the same time.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin to approve an agreement with USG Water for emergency repair work on wells number 4, number 8, and number 10, iron filters, and not to exceed an amount of $716,978. This will be for all three of the filters. Questions and comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is the, is a approval of an ordinance supplementing the Budget Office for the year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025. It is to fund this, these improvements at wells number 4, 8, and 10, in the amount, again, not to exceed $716,978.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 2001.
And the last item, I'm not sure if we're going ahead with it, Mike?
Yeah, if I could jump in here, Mike. So my recommendation for this is to, a motion to table this until two weeks from now, at the next meeting. In addition to this resolution, there was going to be another agenda item, which was an ordinance that basically creates the position that's referred to here. I found a couple of things that I had questions on. There was an, obviously, and I'll take the blame for this, disconnect between Tony and I last week, that this did not get onto the agenda. So that's the recommendation, that we table it. One of the issues that I found in looking through the ordinance was under 2.50.070, the supervision of employees. I was going to make the associated change in that ordinance, since the ordinance was to eliminate a position and create a new position. That section refers to supervision of employees, and it says that the following employees report to the Director of Public Works, and there's a list of employees. It includes Building Commissioner and Building Inspector, and it's my understanding that the department is now structured, is no longer a direct chain of command to Public Works for the Building Commissioner and the Building Inspector, but instead, the Building Commissioner reports to Economic and Community Development. So I don't know whether this is just a carryover from some older departmental structure, but my question to Tony was, should this be changed? So that's a question that I'm going to put to the council tonight. Should that be changed to reflect the current structure, which is that Building Commissioner and Building Inspector report to the Director of Community and Economic Development? So.
Well, I think it needs to fit what we're doing.
Right, so I think that that change needs to be made if that's the current structure, and that's my understanding from talking to Tony today. So that change will be made. So in order to have all this in sync with the new creation of a position, the repeal of the old position, and then this resolution, as well as, I think, a resolution, once the promotion is made, to then eliminate the need to backfill the current position. There will be the ordinance that I referred to, and then two resolutions. The recommendation is that we table this one till we can have all three on the same agenda.
And the other changes that we stip- And the other changes that we stipled said to be in, and there will be added as well?
Yes, the ordinance currently, as currently drafted, includes the language that was discussed in the executive session.
Okay.
So my recommendation, with all due respect, and I apologize to the council for this error, I will gladly take the blame for this.
Is the recommendation has to be specifically why? Because when you table something, you cannot bring it back certain things? Are we, do we have to specify exactly what we're tabling?
I think we're tabling, number six, a resolution approving the promotion of Ada Martino to the newly created position of Assistant to the Director of Public Works and setting the initial salary for that position. That should be tabled until two weeks from today.
November 4th?
Since the position has not yet been created, so we will need to wait till we have the ability to have the ordinance creating that position on an agenda. So it would not be tabling it indefinitely, it'll be just tabling it till the next meeting.
Okay, that's why I wanted to know.
I make a motion to table it until the next meeting, November 4th, I believe it is.
Second.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke, to table the resolution and ordinance approving the promotion of Ada Martino to the newly created position of Assistant to the Director of Public Works and setting the initial salary for that position till two weeks from tonight, to our next city council meeting on November 4th, 2024. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
I'm gonna abstain.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And again, my apologies for the confusion.
Anything else, Mike?
That is all I have, Mayor.
Any questions of Public Works?
Yeah, Mike, I was wondering, where are we at with Weeds there on Oakland Avenue? I know you sent the notice to those places, and they haven't cut it yet, so where are we at with that then?
The, I believe Commonwealth Edison came out and knocked some of theirs down, but I haven't seen the railroad, and we probably need to hire somebody to cut that and then find them, is what we're gonna have to do.
All right. And how are we at the old City Hall building? Are we still have stuff in there, or we have stuff more to move out of there, or?
There is still stuff in there, as far as I know. We've, I know we've gone through everything, and anything that's salvageable that we can be reused, especially out at the West Treatment Plant, as far as furniture and that, we have put aside. I believe, I'm not for sure, that IT has gone through and taken care of any of the computers and such. I believe there may be some computers, and there could be a server over there, I don't know if they have, I'd have to double check with them. Other than that, it's a decision that we have to come up with what we want to do with what's left in there. There is still stuff in there. And do we want to take the time to try and inventory it and sell it in some fashion? That would be a discussion probably for the next time. I believe we can talk about it now, if you'd like.
Can I ask a quick question on the prior item? Do we have a liaison with ComEd that we can't bump this up the chain? It seems silly to me that we can't get grass cut.
Well, ComEd did do some work for us.
Oh, it's, okay.
It's the railroad company.
All right, that's a different story.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I talked to the landscape person in charge at ComEd, and they did do some work out there, but the railroad company has done nothing.
Just a quick other question, just curious, like outside City Hall here, some of the curving with the parking lot, should we have that maybe painted yellow, those curbs, just for safety? You know, like when we have events here or that, so if someone's not paying attention, at least, you know, the curb's yellow where it's raised up and no one trips or that.
You got a problem with that?
No, it's just another maintenance item for you.
Yep, sure, we'll paint it.
All right, thank you.
I think lime green would be nicer.
I, I don't know if this question's for you, but I was like on a phone walking, the cement there is cracked, it looks like it was like hand patched with, does anyone know what's going on there? I took a picture of it, I'll send it to you.
All right, yeah.
Can I send it to you?
Yep.
It looks like somebody came with their hand and patched it.
Yeah.
On top of a huge crack in the middle of the garden or there. So I'm concerned now with the winter, with the snow.
Freestyle.
Yep. So something, and do we have warranty, do we know on that?
We would be outside of warranty.
I know that was after you came, but do we know if we have warranty?
We'd be outside the warranty period.
We are?
Yeah. Yeah, we, one year from we moved in, and that was May, so.
I'll send you the picture right now.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Moving on, City Engineer, Ron Wedeman, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have is looking for a motion toward the material proposal for rock salt, and have the mayor execute and accept the proposal to furnish materials and approval of award with compass material in the amount. And I'm making a correction here, it should be $55,448.00 for the 2024-25 MFT rock salt.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to award the material proposal for rock salt and have the mayor execute the acceptance of proposal for furnished materials and approval of award with compass material in the amount of $55,448.00 for the 2024-25 MFT rock salt. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal? Joe?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, and this was discussed at the last workshop, workshop meeting last Monday, to approve a resolution approving a professional services agreement for design services for the inner circle water main replacement and roadway rehab improvement for design engineering services by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and V3 companies for not to exceed $148,454.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to approve a resolution approving the professional service agreement for designs services for the inner circle water main replacement and roadway rehabilitation improvement, design engineering service by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and V3 companies not to exceed $148,454. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
And Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1262.
And the next item is a motion for a resolution approving a professional services agreement for the 2025 roadway rehabilitation improvement, design engineering services by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for a not to exceed amount of $44,880. In your packet, there is one change in the memo on a location. Alderman, Nate Albert had requested a change from Mia Drive to another location that met the same requirements, so we moved, I moved out Mia Drive and put Linwood in. But it has the same payment rating as Mia Drive did.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to approve a resolution approving this professional service agreement for the 2025 roadway rehabilitation improvement, design engineering services by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, with Christopher B. Burke Engineering not to exceed an amount of $44,880. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1263.
The next item is, I'm just looking for a motion to have the Finance Director complete a budget transfer by moving $50,000 from account number 01035330 to 13005330 to increase to 2005 budget amount for line item 13005330 from 150 to 200,000 to cover the professional engineering services agreement for, for design engineering services. Again, this does not change the actual budget, that changes an internal transfer.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to have the Finance Director to complete a budget transfer by moving $50,000 from account 01035330 to 13005330 to increase to 2025 budget amount for line item 13005330 from 150,000 to 200,000 to cover the professional services agreement for the design engineering services. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Overland?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And that's all I have on the agenda tonight, if there's any questions of myself.
Yes, any updates on the McGilvy lights?
We're right now doing a very, we're doing a variance with the county to allow it a left turn from southbound Weber onto Ryan, so it'll be a three-quarter intersection. The only movement that will not be allowed will be from Ryan going southbound. So that is supposed to be completed at the end of this month, and then design will begin and be completed in early next year.
And I have another question, and an update that goes to you and the chief. The, about five months ago, you requested a stop sign study, a nap for Willow Falls, and they continue asking me, we were supposed to do something about it right after the construction. I brought it to a meeting, like four meetings ago, again, and I haven't heard anything. Any updates?
We, I haven't done anything, I don't know if Ed has, we were waiting for the construction to end before we did anything.
The construction's been done.
We'll talk tomorrow at the staff meeting to get you an update.
Okay, so I'll let them know, we'll get back to them within a couple days?
Do you need that one? I don't think you need it. So I'll say by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ron. Community development, we do not have anything on the agenda tonight, to our Police Department or Police Chief Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor, Council. The item, we discussed at the last work session, we're holding off on the FOIA software. We're going to review with the Attorney's Office, the agreement again, embed it a little bit more thoroughly, and we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting. Something that, I don't know. Something with the access itself, or the company itself, but just with the agreements. Other than that, I would like to remind everybody that Halloween hours are from 4:00 to 7:00 this year. And just remind everybody to watch while you're driving, kids are kids, and they're gonna jet out in front of cars, and they're cut between cars, and you know how it is, they're excited, so please just cover your brakes, slow down, and be on the lookout. We are also gonna have extra patrol that evening, so we will be as visible as we can. And just happy Halloween for everybody. That's all I have.
And chief, we want to let everyone know that we're going to be doing our last annual Halloween show on WJOL because it's my last year. So tune in tomorrow.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, we'll both be there for a swan song.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report, you have before you the request from Superintendent Andy Siegfried from Chaney-Monchi School for their annual Halloween Parade Road Closure. This would be working conjunction, conjunction with our Police Department and our Public Works Department for the safety of all the children, for about the 30-minute parade that begins at 1:00. So I would ask for a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Overland, for the approval of Chaney-Monchi Halloween Parade Road Closure with the assistance of our Police Department and Public Works. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we did have our grand opening at Gas and Wash yesterday, they opened up in December of 2023. We had a great representation from the City of Crest Hill, and there was a great representation there from Gas and Wash also. They have come very far in the 10 months that they've been open, and they do bring a lot of revenue into the city with all the things that they have to offer. So we welcome them into the city and wish them a long stay at that location. And just with Halloween, everybody kind of take extra caution on October 31st, when all the children will be out walking around on the streets. Hopefully, we can have a nice day like today, make it a lot easier for them and their parents to be with them. That's all I have, if anybody has any questions? Yes, Mayor, I was just wondering, I know right now we have, Claudia has been sitting on with you for the economic development?
Yes.
And Alderman Darrell has mentioned that he's had conversation with developers, maybe, you know, he could sit on that also for economic development, since he's been having some developers contacting him, he's mentioned that, so I don't know.
The only problem I would see with that is that would be foreign with three of us in there.
It would be foreign, unless we're afraid.
Well, unless, you know, Claudia would wanna, and Darrell would wanna do it, I don't even have to. It's up to you, I just figured since he's had conversation with developers, maybe, you know, he would be a better asset on that committee.
Maybe he can forward the information to Ron Metzen.
Okay. I'll talk to Ron tomorrow. All right, maybe Darrell can forward some information or whatever on that. Sure. If Claudia and Darrell could work something out too? Right, yeah. However, it would work. Okay, okay.
All right, moving on to the City Clerk's report, our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall, Chris.
Good evening. Final notice that the City of Crest Hill and Lockport Township Government will be doing a free community shred event this Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 AM till noon. It'll be held in the parking lot here at City Hall, and we ask that you have a limit of four boxes. And that's all I have to report.
Questions of City Clerk?
Chris, what time do you want your little elves to be here?
Anytime you want to come.
Five o'clock in the morning.
Anytime before nine.
Okay.
Between eight, I'd say 8:30 and nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you to all the volunteers.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Coffee will be provided by you.
Oh, sure.
Moving on to our City Treasurer's report, our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Three items this evening, only one requiring your action. I seek your approval on the list of bills issued through October 21st, 2024, in the amount of $1,704,413.39.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all for that. Next item is just informational, our quarterly compensation time buyback for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four, through September thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, total twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. The next item I have is also information only, our regular overtime payroll from September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, through October sixteenth of two thousand twenty-four, total two hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. That's all I have for this evening, and, uh, I'll take any questions.
Any questions of Treasurer? All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing, anyone? New business, anything? Committee liaison reports, anybody? City Council comments, positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Begin with Alder McCubal tonight, Joe?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Albert?
Yeah, Mayor, just a reminder, you, a couple of you had mentioned about Halloween from four to seven, just a reminder that the Cresta Lions Club will be hosting their Halloweeny roast at the three locations, the traffic sentence will be a little bit congested at those three locations, Chaney-Monchi School on Elsie Avenue, uh, the Richland Center at Sweetbrier and Linwood Streets, and then Remington Park on Borio Drive, so just, uh, come on out and have a hot dog and a drink on the Cresta Lions Club while you're trick-or-treating. Thank you.
Alderman Sapiti?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alder Person Overland?
Well, I just want to once again remind everybody to be very cautious of all our little goblins and ghosts and everybody out there trick-or-treating, because they're a little impulsive, and they get very excited, so we have to watch out for them. And yes, I am giving my full-sized candy bars out again, Chief, you can let them all know.
I will. Alder Woman Gazal?
Just want to wish everyone, um, happy and safe Halloween, and also, um, last year, um, I was given the opportunity to distribute some pumpkins from the Seagulls, and I just want to clarify that I was there on a public park in my board, in my subdivision. I was not wearing any Crest Hill merchandise, or logos, or a tag as elected official. I was far away from the tent from the Lions, and it's a public event, I posted on social media as a Seagull's offering, I wanted to do something good for the community since I was given this opportunity. And by the way, I always help with the Lions, no matter what, I'm the one that take water, I'm the one that give them electricity, I bring towels, we help with what we can, we are here to serve the resident. So it was brought to my attention that some people are upset because I was giving pumpkins. I think it's a free country, it's an open park, it's open to public, if I want to give hot dogs, if I want to give tamales at this point, I want to give pumpkins, I want to give lettuce, I can do whatever I want at this point, so I hope there's no hard feelings if I end up doing it again this year. Happy Halloween.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Dyke?
Just want to echo what everyone's kind of said, but especially to have a happy and safe Halloween.
Okay, public comment, anyone like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional, Linda?
Linda Dyke, seventeen hundred Kelly. I just wondered, uh, where we're at with these buses down there, and the Oaklands, um, there's a lot of, the doors are missing off of them, the side doors are all open, um, I witnessed the other morning, some homes leaving there. And I just wondered if they would fall in, these buses would fall, they're the same thing as like abandoned vehicles, like can't we tag them? And they tagged, we told them how to do it. A lot of them, they rush on them.
I know the, uh, I know the building commissioner was working on it as well, I'll, I'll get with him tomorrow and see what we can do. Yeah, I know he was working on it, though.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am? Your name for the record, please, your address is optional.
My name's Tracy Dunn. Getting a little note for myself, so when I'm in town, I'm gonna make sure that my family's, uh, living in the household. Cause I mentioned my name is Tracy Dunn, and I'll share with you that I reside in fourteen twenty-sixth Street in Crest Hill, I've been a resident in Crest Hill since two thousand five. Unfortunately, in two thousand twenty-three, May, I experienced a house fire, and I was, uh, it was suggested by Austin Insurance Company that I hire a fire restoration company to work with. The restoration went well, all went well, with the exception of an water pipe that was mistakenly, not intentionally mistakenly, not, which resulted in a water damage. I contacted the restoration company and made a complaint. Ever since that complaint, my life has been a living nightmare, and I contacted you, Mr. Mayor, gave email at this time last year, and I share with you that I have been experiencing unthinkable stalking and harassment ever since that complaint. And since that email that I sent to Mr. Mayor has gotten worse, and this has definitely crippled my professional career, I'm no longer able to work in a regular order institution, I'm a higher education professional, my name is Dr. Tracy Dunn, I have twenty-plus years of higher education, this group stalking and harassment cost me my job, six figures off. And I'm asking, here's my, Mr. Mayor, I emailed you, you promised me that you were going to forward my email to the chief, and I've yet to hear a response from you or the chief. This has crippled my professional career, I'm no longer able to work in a regular order institution, because when I'm there, the group stalking and harassment just pre-sent me, I was literally kicked out of the city life due to this, because they associated me with this. I shared with the City of Lisle at the time, this has no bearing on my professional ethics whatsoever, I can't control what other people do, but here as a resident and a taxpaying citizen of the City of Crest Hill, there is a complaint, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I did send it to the police chief, refresh my memory, are these individuals within the neighborhood?
These, it has gotten progressively worse, these people are, originated in the town of the Water Ridge, they have sent to other people, this has gone from a community event, I'm sorry, a, a town hall of our original event to a community event. This seems like a lifetime movie, whenever I leave my residence, there are at least fifty cars on both ways on Weber Road following me around everywhere I go, they vandalized three or four of my tires, I bought my son a car, completely vandalized that car, walked around the neighborhood this summer, they let their pet bulls off loose on me, I called the City of, the police, once again, I've called you guys nine-one-one, more than two dozen times, it is utterly ridiculous, to the point that I have no resolution. I don't know these people, I don't know why they're harassing me, I don't know why they're bullying me, but it is crippling, and it has cost me my mental, my natural, social, and well-being, all of the above, I checked all the boxes when it, in regards to my mental health. Yes. I would really appreciate that. And in regards to safety, this does not only impact me, it impacts the entire City of Crest Hill, Joliet, Plainfield, Bolinbrook, Lisle, all of, everywhere I go, I'm being followed, and it is just utterly ridiculous, and I'm here for intervention, and I appreciate the fact that you'll speak to me, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that this has been ongoing now for a year and a half, yes.
Usually this is only public comment, we're not supposed to comment, um, but we are your elected officials.
Yes.
You're your Alderman, Alderman, and we were not notified about this, like, we didn't know that you sent the, the mayor this email.
Oh, I have gone, I sent the mayor, I.
And so I'm just letting you know that we were not aware of this.
Oh, wow.
It was not communicated to us, we need to present you, so we can try to talk to you
as well. Yes, of course. Yes, thank you, I just want to.
Did you notify the other, or even Bolinbrook?
I notified Joliet, Bolinbrook, Lisle, Plainfield, Aurora, DeKalb, Lisle.
Is that because of the changes that happened at, at your subdivision two years ago with the association?
No, I'm actually, I'm on the board, but I'm not representing the board, so I didn't share that with them, but the board just suggested I contact the city, but as opposed to contacting the city, I said, I'm gonna come here to make, you know, put names with faces, they suggested that I come here and speak with you. I represent, I'm on the board, and I've notified the board, and I've actually, I, I validated all of these, these allegations that I'm making with validity, with all the information that I have, this has been very costly to me.